Try to have a good meeting.
Thank you. We'll have a great meeting. All right. The situat- We'll try this. We'll try this. The Situate School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there's disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. Okay, let's call the February 5th Situate School Committee meeting to order at 6:11 here. Okay, we'll- We'll jump right into the FY25 budget workshop here, and I'll turn it over to Superintendent Burkett.
Good evening, everyone, and um- I'd like to start off by um thanking a few people. Tonight, we'll have a slide that goes over the process of the budget, and I just want to thank each person um- All the people, I should say, responsible for creating this budget. Um, as I mentioned on Saturday at the um- Workshop, that it's a year-round endeavor to create the budget, to operate the budget, to monitor the budget, and then to build a budget based on our vision and values, and in this case, the strategic plan. I want to thank our teachers who start the process with sharing um their needs, their input, but also to speak to the bigger topics, along with our department chairs and principals about curriculum needs and input on that. And our facilities folks who get involved in the conversations with Dr. Rab and Mr. Cataldo about our facility needs, repairs, and maintenance. So there's a lot of moving parts there, and certainly the collaboration with the town I'll get into. Working with the town through the operational budget, but I'll also talk a little bit about capital budget today as part of the intro, which complements our budget in our buildings. And last but not least, to our school committee, whose major responsibility is the school budget. So before I get into the outline of our meeting tonight, I do want to give a little history. This is my fourth year in the district, and I think um- To share what's happened in the last four years with uh under the the school committee's uh direction and oversight in cooperation with the town, what we've accomplished. If you recall back in 2020, we had um some support with Esser money, Esser 1, Esser 2, Esser 3, and we also had the CARES Act money uh in line with our op- uh operational budget. In that time, we used our money responsibly, we planned ahead, and we were smart so that when the CARES Act and Esser money's ended, we'd still be in good financial shape. So I think when we talk about future uh budgets, they're all tied into previous budgets and how you manage that budget uh process. So I just wanted to share some of the accomplishments and some of the things we were able to do to build up to this process uh because we're also in the process of um talking to the community about our new school. And we want to show them through this budget process in the last four years, quite honestly, um that we build up the trust and respect and the responsibility of handling the taxpayers' money and doing so wisely, prudently, and in meeting the best needs of our students. So the first thing I'd like to talk about is some of the monies we spent on um Esser. And instead of hiring staff that would eventually have to come out of operational budget, we use that on a lot of one-time expenses, including a lot of curriculum needs. I think at one point, we were up in curriculum spending of over 300%. We spent over $350,000 on uh curriculum um one uh one-to-one uh Chromebook initiative that we put in and a lot of the after-school activities. If you remember some of the of the academies we run that we continue to run, and I'll get to that, how we do that now in our operational budget. And a literacy program that was over $300,000 that could be a budget breaker that we didn't have for several years, never existed, wasn't need, and we used that money to purchase that, and it's paying off um dividends now, and it's a great thing to have. And lastly, a lot of that care money went into HVAC um fixtures. Our schools were in rough shape, you know, even the newer ones with HVAC. So now we've got clean air, we used all that money, we spent it all wisely, I think, on the upgrade of our buildings and the HVAC and how the ventilation works in our systems, and that stuff costs a lot of money. So I think that saved on the operation, it also saved on our capital asks through the town. And I think that was all good stuff. As far as capital, in the last three years, we've worked, collaborated with the town, and I want to thank the community for voting at a town meeting for these, supporting these um capital projects. They've tallied about a little over $6 million in three years. So on average, $2 million a year, and these are proactive decisions that we work on to make sure that our buildings are operational, but not only that, that are in being improved so that we won't have to come back in a few years and ask for another school building, that we're showing the town that we're improving our facilities, and we're making it best for our learning environments, for our teachers, and for our kids. So I just want to read a few of them in case people have forgotten or weren't aware. In three short years, we replaced the all the flooring in the Situate High School. You're seeing some of it in the library uh which short helped with, but also in the hallways at a cost of $615,000. We replaced the parking lot at Wampatack School for approximately $304,000. We replaced the flooring at the Wampatack School for approximately $200,000. We put a new roof in at Jenkins uh that wasn't right from the go when it was installed for $950,000 this past summer. We put a partial roof replacement and repair at Situate High School for their roof this past summer at a cost of $650,000. Situate High School locker room renovation uh two out of the three phases. The uh female uh team room was just finished, and we'll be excited to share that out now, but we've got one more phase left for a cost of 1.993 million dollars. And it looks absolutely beautiful. We refurbished the Colby Cutler Center for $100,000. Uh the replacement of school technology and infrastructure district-wide over the three years has been $450,000. We replaced um Wampatack uh flooring for $250,000. Cushing and Hathaway, although we haven't put a lot of money in there for obvious reasons, they didn't uh lack the appropriate smoke detectors. Uh and now they're safe, and there were $50,000 to take care of that. Jenkins stairs on the exterior, leaving that to the playground in the back, were uh old and unsafe. That's uh $229,000. The Wampatack portico, which is brand-new and beautiful, $325,000. And not in the operational budget, but something that I want folks to know that our new um cafeteria director, Patrick Legere, has been working on, and it's a separate budget, is cafeteria equipment. We've improved that for our our team for over a cost of $325,000. So just wanted to share that with folks. Um and then finally, some budget enhancements over the last three years through the operational budget that we've been able to implement to make sure things run smoothly. The first big one is the hiring of teachers. We hired uh three-plus elementary positions over the last three years to reduce and maintain low-class sizes of under 20 for our elementary schools. I know a philosophical commitment from for all of us in the committee for sure. We um hired a new reading specialist, a BCBA, special education teachers, paraprofessionals, a director of DEI, and a resource officer last year. For a total cost over those three years of approximately $765,000. Those are investments, in my opinion. We started our first maintenance line item, again, to take care, in addition to the capital, uh take care of the day-to-day maintenance of our buildings for $250,000 uh per year over the last three years and counting, and this is in this year's budget as well. We settled six union contracts that certainly uh pay for our our great staff that we have. And in the first two years, that some people that weren't aware or weren't here at the time, um in the in the first year, we got rid of the kindergarten fee, which was a savings to our community for uh in perpetuity for $520,000 a year. Next year, we got rid of the athletic fees, which were over $225,000 in fees. So not only did we make all these enhancements, we took almost a million dollars off the taxpayers' plates. But I think that's a lot to be proud of, and we're going to add to that tonight, uh even though this is our lowest increase. I think we still have some, based on all these responsible decisions that we've all made together in collaboration with the town, in support of our us our our community, uh things we should be proud of. So I'll parlay that into the first slide we have tonight. Um I've talked a little bit about our new strategic plan, again, a collaborative effort. Uh that was about six months in the undertaking last year from all stakeholders. These are our three strategic objectives, and I it's important that we tie our finances into what our objectives are and our goals and values of the district. And so I'll be talking about each one of these in the next three slides, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Rab to start talking about the specifics. Uh and before I do that, I just want to let the community uh know that are watching tonight, that if you weren't able to make uh the presentation on Saturday, uh that was a little more uh detailed and line items, that that presentation, along with tonight's, uh will both be available up online this week for all for all to see. And we'll make sure that people have access, and we'd be happy to answer any questions uh if you do have questions on that, but probably the um the most transparent budgets that I've seen in my four years here, and each year, we try to improve on that based on the feedback of the committee and of our our community. So we'll go to the next slide. So the first one, teaching, learning, and leading, obviously hugely important. And um I just want to let folks know that these are enhancements, that we're certainly spending money on all the other things that go under here. But these are just some things that will be focused on this year a little bit more. So each year, we I think Dr. Bukowski brought this up on Saturday, we uh in our budget, we include um investment in our curriculum cycles and support for resources and review, and this year's focus will be mathematics, 6 through 12. This will include all common resources for all our teachers, so they're on the same page, same curriculum, same resources, and that will allow us to calibrate that curriculum and also provide consistent training so that everyone's trained in using the same methodologies. And also that professional development, and the next board talks about summer learning and professional development. I want to thank our teachers and department chairs for making themselves available over the summer. That doesn't happen everywhere, and to be able to do that gives us a really strong head start, basically using our year-round time to work on curriculum development. And the last one is professional development, um which is based on our universal divine design for learning, which talks about challenging all students and meeting them where they're at individually. There's a link there for folks. This is the group uh cast that we're using for our trainings uh for also uh resources, and we're starting with the Gates team that we've talked about earlier. I know Ms. Driscoll had talked about that, but we'll be certainly updating uh the committee on that work, but that will continue into next year and be expanded. Uh so that's a resource link for folks there. And the mathematics, and we'll get to that, uh investment is close to $500,000 in the curriculum. Communication and partnerships, um you know, these are extremely important. These are ones that we purchase. There's several we have that are free that we've built relationships with that we're also proud of, and I'll give an example of that in a moment. But the um mass communication, website, and safety, I think these are all under the communication umbrella where four years ago, we didn't really have a functioning website. Now we do. We have an app that a lot of folks use that we've got two or three hits on that today, so keeps pretty much you uh everyone apprised of that, so that's, I think, advanced. And I want folks to know that we certainly can do better in there, and we're working on that. It's only our second year using those things. But it does allow us to do mass communication to folks, um computed by voice, text, email, and the app. And a variation of those depending on the nature of the matter, and the last one's the safety communication. As an example, it gives us the opportunity to communicate pretty quickly in a variety of measures, uh using current technologies to communicate with the community. The next one is collaboration with the town. And I think um I'll leave it to my the resident expert, Mr. Gates, on explaining the uh financial forecast, because it is very complex uh yet very sound in 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 the best, in my opinion, in 30 years of education and being through 30 years of budget processes, and not always as written in the role of superintendent, obviously, but being from a teacher all the way up through from a principal to an administrator, uh I've sat through these, and um there I have yet to see a more collaborative give-and-take approach where there's an there's just a conversations, and and they're often very positive, and they're what's best for the town, what's best for the kids, what's best for the community, and so I'm really proud to be part of that. And I think that happened again this year, and there was uh an opportunity for the school to make a contribution over to the town based on our split. Uh we typically get 66 and 2/3%. We adjusted that percentage through that financial forecast subcommittee this year to um give the town side 100 approximately $166,000 that would have been in our budget, but the town needed it more than us this year, and that would be reciprocated, so we need it down the road. So it's just a great example of, if you look at some other cable shows or TVs, and you're and you're watching some other towns, that some of these things can be contested and um where that is an example of us just having a um a good conversation, and I want to thank Ms. Fenwick and Mr. Gates, who were at that meeting, and Dr. Rab, and you know, we had a little quorum on the hallway and talked about it, and uh based on their input, we thought it was the right thing to do, and we stand by that. So just wanted to share that. The partnerships, um we've talked a lot to the community about Mass Insight. It's one of the best groups I've worked with, allowing for uh really focused training for our AP courses and advanced programming, uh training for our staff, uh assessments for our kids, and resources, really helpful, powerful. Uh you've heard some teachers talk about the the power of that and the kids, so that's something we will continue. And similarly with our adults and the professional development, a lot of SEL type of thing under the Mass Partnerships for Youth. This, uh for example, allowed some of our professional development. We've moved to have teachers having choices instead of a one-size-fits-all. They'll have multiple choices for that day that fits their needs and their goals. And Mass Partnership for Youth, Youth offers some online opportunities that our teachers can take, that are really enhance those um our ability to focus on more uh specific catered type of professional learning for our staff. And the last one is finance, facilities, personnel, and technology. I'll start with facilities. I alluded to this a little bit in my intro, um but not only do we, we have a $250,000 line item uh that this past year, we spent over that, so it's if we have to be flexible, that's just a goal, that's an estimate. Things happen, things break, things need to be repaired, and I just I know Mr. Cataldo and Mr. Dr. Rab did a good job of explaining to folks here Saturday that I'll repeat to the community that if something breaks and we can see that we not only can repair that uh item, and I'll use sinks, for example, but then there's six or seven more sinks that are 20 years old, we'll go and invest and fix them all so that we can enhance their longevity for 15 or 20 years, so we're not coming back and doing a sink by sink. So those are some, I think, long-sighted decisions by smart people that were made to help us get our best bang for our buck, but also um keep our s- our our schools in really great shape, no matter what age they are. Then the next one is the additional positions for this year. A community technician and um our district coordinator, moving that from 1.7 to 1.0, which is a 0.3 adjustment. And those two positions um will be gone through the school committee and adjustments and uh job descriptions, and also um a follow-up based on Saturday with a presentation on how those fit into the larger picture of our technology department and special education department respectively. So we'll have that forthcoming. And the other one I mentioned earlier, this is a um in addition to the operational budget, it was under Esser, and it was an example of a program that were a position that would go and seek grants and extra opportunities for our kids. And we're proud to report after two years, we said we'd assess it every year, and if it was making itself uh money back from and paying for the position, that we'd include it in the operational budget. Not only has it done that, it's almost doubled. Uh we're we're only midway through this year, and so after a year and a half, we're in the black, $188,590 and counting. So I I I think that's in addition to paying for both salaries, and I just wanted to give a couple of examples of the opportunities these uh create for our kids, which are some social-emotional learning curriculum that we've invested in, the Acceleration Academies that I know are a lot of our kids like, and that are included on vacations, weekends, Saturdays, summers. So again, great investments. Those are just two. I think, again, that's a position we're going to come back on and report out on, because I think that deserves its own time on a deep dive into all the things, because it's such good news, all the grants that we we've been uh that position has earned us. But then the follow-through and how we've used our staff and how our kids have supported it, that's a real good story. So that's um that's requested, and you'll see that in this budget as well. So I'm gonna, I'll take that, okay, I pause now for any questions on there. I'm gonna keep going, I can have time.
I have a question on the hand, because you, one of the first um slide, the cast designs learning. You said, I don't feel like we could click on that.
Yeah.
So with this, do you like upload?
It's a great question. We will, we will post the um the presentations with the live links on the website. Yep.
Good question. For when you mentioned professional development uh on under the teacher, living, and leading slide.
Yes.
Um just a quick question about just the question for Heidi, but um how as new teachers come in each year, and it's like if you take, for example, the uh the new the reading curriculum, or how do new teachers onboard with that as others are in different stages of learning that? So when they're doing PD, how do you start someone at year one when uh there was a, that might be a really big question.
No, I can give you the philosophical answer, and then I think if we need some more detail, we can get that back, certainly. So I think the first, the opening couple of days are very hectic for everyone, but we put that aside for the the new teachers to kind of go over everything that we have, and then with the individualized learning for, say, look, there's an elementary literacy curriculum, for example, we'll make sure that they get that support in their school, so that might be with a reading specialist, it might be with their um during their some IOT time, faculty meetings, thing. And they'll have options during the PD day too, is catch up as well on that. So that'll be their focus, and I think it's a good point. In the past, we we wouldn't have that. For example, we would be on, okay, we're on our third year of the literacy professional development. Well, I'm a first-year teacher, I I'm not ready for that. Now we can kind of individualize that, and that's an example of something that could be individualized for teachers.
The choice through PD.
Correct. That's right.
I don't think anybody at home can hear anybody but Bill, so we have to figure out how the
I think his personal stuff can mute.
Yeah.
So I've got to mute when you're talking.
You have to mute when, yeah. I have a question, but it's all, Maria, do you two? Do you go first?
Do I unmute on?
You have to unmute.
I mute on Zoom.
Yeah. I don't know.
You may have.
It's a shot.
Double mute.
I'm gonna try this. Um and this too, microphone too?
You don't need the microphone.
Okay. Um I was just, it's a kind of a uh on the same, in the same vein as Nicole's question about PD, so it might need to be answered at a different time, but I was also just curious about when we get a new curriculum, like the new um math curriculum that's coming. I'm assuming that we have some time built into the PD days where math teachers have to do that. I know we have the choice component, and that sounds like it's working really well, but I'm assuming when we have something big like that happen, we kind of need to say, you know, okay.
So, yes, so the question is um individualized versus mandatory, basically. So any new stuff like that? First of all, I think we've done a good job of piloting things, so I think they did a real good job with literacy and the math. We pilot things, get teacher in. They're going to like it, and that we've tried it, so I think that's a huge step. And then when we do the trainings, there'll be certain ones, you know, this day is for all elementary, or in this case, it'll be 6 through 12, math teach- math teachers will and specialists will have to go to this training. And then that might be the whole year commitment. And then, so if in playing that example out, if we did that, then all the other teachers in the past would have to go through some of that, or now they have options to do other things. So that's kind of how we've expanded, but there certainly is some focus. And even in the literacy, I think we're still, you know, working on that. So there's different people in different directions, but now I think everybody, and there's some some of these you can take on your own time as well, if you wanted to do that online as addition to the one days that we have.
So I don't have an answer to my question, but I think it'll be something that we'll collaborate on between, you know, your team and then the school committee. I really appreciated that you highlighted some of the investments that have been made, because today I took a look at last year's budget and was noting the amount of money we invested in science and in some of the reading, um as well as the staff. And so I think for me, a a good next step would be what happened with that investment, right? Like, what's your return on investment? I know that's not a clean, you know, this happens because of this, but it would be great in some of those um celebrating celebration of learning, if our science team or our, you know, this time next year, our math team is saying, because of this money, we were able to purchase X, and this is what we're seeing, just so we're so, you're getting so good with this budget about transparency, and I think the next level is what's going on, so.
Yeah, and I agree, and I think that's a carryover from Saturday's theme, is kind of what I put two and two together is, you know, in a the example, I keep going back, is to literacy, which is three years ago, a lot of money, starting to work well. Let's have a report out on how that's going, let's give some specific examples and tie it back to the investment, what we're using it for. So absolutely, we can do that. Thank you.
Yeah, you need to unmute when you start again, whoever.
I don't think I, I don't think I'm muted.
I have to stop sharing to unmute.
As long as we're not getting
No, you don't.
I don't.
You should be able to see your mic at the bottom left corner, where it should be slashed, and you just need to unslash it.
When I'm sharing, it's drawing the whole thing, but.
So close to spinning, so I can't do anything.
You need mic, you want mic.
And I can stop and then reshare.
Or guess.
Okay. Alright, so I'm unmuted now, so, okay. So the
They can hear you. I'm I'm checking in with someone who's listening to make sure they can hear you.
Fantastic. So I added this slide of budget development process and timeline. Anytime that I make a list, I like to start in the middle of it, so we're doing a great job. But it's important to understand that we begin developing this budget in the fall, and we work with the principals and the department heads, they gather input from the teachers and all the stakeholders. And then we meet together, we meet with Mrs. Driscoll and Mr. Burkhead to put together the budget. We share a draft with the finance subcommittee, we have our workshop on Saturday. We have tonight's meeting, and where the school committee continues to gather input and ask questions, and then we'll vote on this budget next week. And then we present the budget to the select board next Tuesday evening, and advisory next Thursday evening, all in anticipation of the annual town meeting on April 8th. So I think it's just helpful to understand the whole timeline and see kind of how we go through the budget process. As Mr. Burkhead mentioned.
Of course, I never interrupt the superintendent. We've got one person after all that, they can't see anything that is in here in person. So Mr. Gates, do you want to sit right here so you can see? I can give him a presentation. I'm going to give you a copy of the presentation, that's all. Thank you.
Feel free to move up if you can hear.
Thank you.
No worries. So as Mr. Burkhead mentioned, we have a fantastic opportunity in Situate with the Financial Forecast Committee where we can take a look at the revenue of the town and really get a sense of what's going to be available for FY25 for both the schools and the town. And so if you look at this slide, this shows what the Financial Forecast Committee voted about a month ago, and it shows a total available funding for the schools and the town of $70 million. And as Mr. Burkhead said, we had made an agreement for many years that the share would be 66 and 2/3% for the schools and 33 and 1/3% for the town. This year, because of some needs of the town, we were able to give back 1/3 of a percent, approximately $166,000, to help the town out. So our increase is 3.2% or $46.9 million in the purple there. If you go to the next, well, you'll see the next slide here. We look at the revenue projections of how do we put together a budget? So our budget is not only the $46.9 million, but it's also supported by an additional $4 million in state and federal grants, as well as revolving accounts. And these are critical to our success. We couldn't do it without these. These are entitlement grants, these are grants that we know we're going to get every year. And the revolving accounts are based on revenue from fees, the couple of fees that we do have left. And Mr. Burkhead mentioned years ago, we were able to eliminate the athletic fee and the kindergarten fee, but there are a couple of fees left, and we rely on that income for this budget. So as a quick roll-up of just to take a quick look at, you know, Title I provides math support at the middle school. And throughout the budget, when we go to the later slides, you'll see how I incorporated the state and federal grants, as well as the fees into the budget, so that you can see exactly which parts of the budget are supported by these lines. And you'll and you'll be able to see that in a moment. Title IIa and Title IV, continue our commitment to professional development. IDEA helps us with our added district tuitions, as well as our specialization transportation. It also supports some paraprofessional work. The ECC grant is the early childhood that supports paraprofessionals at the Early Childhood Center. Uh Metco supports all of our Metco directors, our transportation, bus monitors, everything related to the Metco program. And Circuit Breaker is funding that we receive back from the state to help us support our added district tuition. For our revolving accounts, we have non-resident tuition. You'll notice that um we're predicting $225,000. That's our IXL program here at the high school. We want a very successful, substantially separate program here at the high school, and we do tuition students in from added district. We receive money from the early childhood receipts, as well as our bus fees. Um we've done fantastic at our sports events, many of our teams make the tournaments, and all of those are revenue generating for us. Um and then we also have the Buslees, which is partially on the town for $250,000. Um, and then we also have the buslees, which is partially on the town for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So all in, we developed the budget based on fifty one point oh six four million dollars. And so as I develop the budget, we have not only our forty six point nine million operating budget, but an additional four million in grants that put together the entire package. Uh, before I move on to enrollment, are there any questions about revenue? Cause I didn't want to, I don't want to move on without having a revenue question.
Tom, can you talk a little bit? I know folks have, when they look at the revenue lot, those revenue lines and, um, like the non-resident tuition, for example, I've been asked in town, you know, why aren't we trying to increase that number or be more competitive? Can you just talk a little bit about like, are we, for example, with the ratio of students to teachers, are we at capacity? Is there room to expand? What, what happens if we try to expand in terms of, I'm assuming we'd have to hire more staff and supports? Can you just, just a little like a high level overview of that?
Absolutely. So we're always looking to expand those opportunities. I don't know the number of students exactly off the top of my head, but I believe it's five or six that we have that we're tuitioning in from added district right now. And we are at a point from what I understand where if we were to add students, we'd have to add staff, whether it be a paraprofessional or another teacher. Having said that, that's not the end of the world if we have the revenue to support it. And I know, again, Dr. Bobert's not here this evening, but I know, is she on the Zoom? She can hear me. Oh, that's awesome. Okay. So maybe she'll jump in. She wants to jump in, she can raise her hand maybe. But, um, I'll keep going till she raises her hand. But, um, the, but I know from talking to her that we're always looking to expand those opportunities. And so from every year, we're looking for that.
I guess I just, the, the folks, the few folks that I've talked to about, I just want to remind folks that when we, you know, are looking to gain revenue, there's also a cost side that sometimes I think we forget. I'm like, oh, we could just bump that number and make more money, but it's not, it's just not that simple. So it sounds like she's, it's like she's raising her hand. So it'd be great to hear from the expert.
Hi, oh, yes. Can you hear me? Okay. Okay. Yeah. So it's exactly what Tom was saying, you know, our first our first priority is to situat resident, situat students. And if we have space available, um, we're more than willing to, um, take that student in and, um, a lot of it depends on our staffing because I don't want to take in a student that will kind of disrupt our program. So we are being a little careful in terms of who we're accepting and to make sure it's the right fit and if there's enough space. But if at some point we would need to add a teacher, then it kind of doesn't really make sense. And, um, but yeah, we, we're in the process of looking at two more students right now for next year. And it just depends on, you know, if we have the space. We, we've also have, um, increased the tuition to a little bit more competitive amount and, but I think it's still fair. And it's well below the collaborative.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Bobert. Thank you. So at next I want, before we talk about the budget, there's a couple of slides I wanted to show with just some overall information. And one of the things that's often talked about is our enrollment. And so if you look at this slide, it shows you the enrollment from October first, twenty twenty two to October first, twenty twenty three. And you'll notice that we went from twenty seven fifty nine to twenty seven forty five on October twenty twenty three. And you might think that our enrollment is going down. However, anecdotally, I've been hearing from the principals and from the buildings that in fact our enrollment is increasing. So I took a look at our February one, twenty twenty four enrollment and we're up by thirty one students from October first. And I think this is an important part of the story is we absorb new students throughout the whole school year. And whether they be at the preschool level, kindergarten level, middle school, we absorb these students. And you might think to yourself, well, you know, thirty one students in one classroom, that would be an additional staff. But when you spread it out around the whole school district, we can absorb it within our current budget. That's important. You know, an additional hundred kids would might cause a little bit of a crisis, but thirty, thirty, forty kids, we can absorb that. And it speaks to the strength of our budget in order to be able to do that and the staff that we have. So I wanted to just make it clear that our enrollment is increasing, not decreasing. And if you look at NESDEC, which is the New England School Development Council, and what they show is over the next ten years, our enrollment leveling off and going up a little bit, and we're seeing that trend. This year, we're, we're starting to go up and it's consistent with that trend. These numbers don't include preschool. They don't include preschool in their, in their calculations. But you can see here, just looking at the graph, it's leveling off and going up. And so we're seeing that. And they're also seeing that in terms of the enrollment projection. So it's one of those things we're absorbing. We don't have any new staff this year that are tied to enrollment for twenty five. We're absorbing those new kids as they go.
As I mentioned, I think this is an unknown and unexpected and it's great data to have. Could you just confirm again, where is this current enrollment? That's not from NESA. NESA gives the, and the expected enrollment. This is actual enrollment that we get off of our own database. Okay. I think it's great that we have the ability, I mean, never really thought about, we have the ability anytime to just gather that information. I think it's nice to know because I don't know if it's monitored on a regular basis, but it would be nice if, if it changes by thirty, thirty students a month or something, it'd just be nice to, you know, it's nice to see this, I guess.
Thank you.
It's great. Thank you.
The other piece of information that I wanted to share with the committee and the community is some town comparisons. So one of the review tools, and I'm not sure if the committee here has seen this before, but it's interesting information. The DART is the district analysis review tool. And what it is, is it's an opportunity for us to compare ourselves to towns that have similar socioeconomic backgrounds, similar enrollment to situat. It's, it's fun to compare ourselves to surrounding towns. It always is, you know, how are we doing against Marshfield and Norwell, Norwell and Ducksbury and Hingham. And in fact, Ducksbury and Hingham are part of our DART community, um, but Norwell isn't. But regardless, I wanted to show the in-district per pupil expenditure. You can go crazy looking at data online. And I picked one data point of hundreds to show. Because I think this, when it says in-district per pupil, what it does is it excludes the added district tuitions. That's what we're excluding here. Um, and just shows what we spend on our in-district students against the state average. And over the last three years, twenty twenty three data is not available yet. So then as far as I can go is twenty twenty two. Um, but you'll notice for twenty twenty two, situat's average was eighteen thousand one hundred and five. And you know, the state adrew average was eighteen thousand one hundred and nine. What that tells me is that we are right at the average. We're not spending too much. We're not spending too little. And I think sometimes people will come out and say, well, you know, is situat spending more than they should or less than they should? And I think this shows us that we're where we need to be and we can sustain that three point two percent increase. Um, sure.
Does this, do these numbers include S R funds? Is that why each community is showing like a pretty sharp increase? Okay.
It shows in-district expenditures including S R. So that's why in that one year to the next, there was a pretty sharp increase.
Thank you.
It's spread out among all the communities, so it's a fair comparison. You know, and you can look at certainly how we compare to other towns. Um, and it might be a little alarming because you're not used to saying, well, do you compare yourself to North Reading or Reading? But from a socio economic, socioeconomic and enrollment standard, we're more comparable to them than we are to normal. And so it gives us that opportunity. So let's take a look at salaries and expenses again. Like I mentioned on Saturday, I start at sixty thousand feet and then we drill down to fifty, forty and thirty. So if we look at our expense summary here, the point of this slide is simply to let everybody know that the majority of our money goes to our schools. And that's the way it should be in a school district. Um, you can see, well, you know, three quarters of, of, of our budget goes to the individual buildings. And you can see that in this pie chart. That's really why I wanted to show this of the entire fifty one million dollars. Salaries versus expenses, we're at eighty, basically eighty, twenty. I included the OOD as an expense, the added district tuitions. And again, eighty, twenty, in my experience is where you want to be as a school district. We are primarily people. That's what we are. We have four hundred and ninety six staff. And so eighty, twenty is about where you want to be. But we do need expenses to run the district. And I, you know, as Mr. Burke had mentioned earlier, we have that commitment to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for extraordinary expenses. And we need that in order to make the learning happen for our teachers and our students. And, uh, finally, in terms of a sixty thousand foot number, um, you know, roughly a quarter of our budget is spent on special education. The last time I looked, we're about seventy percent, seventeen percent of our students are special ed. But again, when you add the OOD tuitions, it's about twenty five percent of our budget goes toward those students. And that's appropriate. Those are our neatest students. And about seventy five percent to regular education.
Tom, are you, when you created these pie charts, are you using the same categories that we used last year in the budget? Do you know?
As close as possible, yes. Yeah. I, I looked at the way he did his pie chart.
Wondering.
And I tried to mirror it as much as possible.
All right. So it's, it's almost an apples to apples. Well, if I look at it, okay.
So if you look at our next slide, again, coming from sixty thousand feet down to maybe fifty thousand feet, I wanted to show, uh, salaries and expenses and how are we distributing that fifty one million dollars throughout the district? And you can see here, you know, I broke it out by building and then special education. And as we see later in the budget, as I mentioned on Saturday, the OTPT BCBA's team leaders are in that one special education number. Currently they're in different parts of the budget. I've kind of consolidated them. So you'll see some changes that to put them all there. Um, but otherwise this is pretty consistent with the way it was done last year. And we'll talk about some of these individual ones in, in a moment. So I don't want to go too far into it. Um, and then for the second part of this, the summary combined, um, I looked at our central office as well as the salaries of the chairs, all put together, our athletic budget, technology, early childhood center and transportation as major cost centers of, of how the fifty one million dollars is apportioned. So if we continue forward, I've rolled up the budget in this presentation to mirror the same cost centers that the school committee saw last Monday in its FY twenty four transfers. So as we begin to look at the budget and we begin to look at it, becoming part of the operating budget. And as we look at the budget next year and we look at transfers next year, you'll start to see a consistency in the way the forms are, are put together. The other thing that I've done is I embedded the grants and revolving into it. They're separate because they're separated. But you can see which line items we apply those grants revolving to. I thought that was helpful. I might be the only one. I thought it was helpful. So we begin with you guys. So we look at the school committee and, um, there's just a, a very small increase there, basically contractual increase, but I kept it consistent. Those numbers have been enough to do what the school committee wants to do in terms of membership to, um, MASC and the professional development that the school committee, um, wants to go to. We have funds available for all of that. Looking first at the, and, and stop me if please.
Yeah. Can we go back to the school committee for a sec? I think I asked this before and I think we maybe didn't figure it out, but why the, why does teachers' course reimbursement sit under school committee?
It's, it's a choice that was made years ago. I looked into it a little bit when you did ask. And different districts put it in different places. It can go in the regular professional development lines as well. The problem that happens when you move a significant portion of the budget from one part to another, um, it can, it can throw off state reports a little bit. So there's been a consistency the way that this has been reported over the years. And if it doesn't hurt anything in this particular line and people understand why it's there, it's, it's easier to leave it there. If you move it, what happens is like state reports I just showed you, some of those in-district tuitions. Sometimes they show different jumps and different things in different lines and it can be hard until it happens over a couple of years and kind of works its way out. So it's a choice. It was a choice that was made years ago. And it just, it's, it's perhaps because it's tied to the contract and tied to the SDA contract, it was put there at one point or another. I don't really know. But it doesn't impact the school committee's, um, ability to work or it doesn't impact our state reports if I leave it where it is. Like I said, in other districts I've been in, it's been there or it's been in this professional development lines. So I, I did look into it a little bit.
Yeah, thank you. That's helpful. It's just, it's just odd since we don't have any actual control over it and it's huge. It's very large and I feel like it, because it's not with other PD, just, I don't know.
I can look into it more. And if, if in FY twenty six, seven, I, I just want to make sure I'm not impacting a report.
I agree. I agree. It's not a big, um, deal, I think is, but I do think it's important to explain it because I think otherwise it stands out. It looks funny.
Absolutely.
Need one of your good notes in there, Tom.
Perfect. Thank you.
Note, the notes for the show we can add before we post this.
I'll add it.
Notes for a great help. Look at that. That's, looks like you all are spending another ninety grand. So a note, we'll go with the notes in the next year. We, I think now that we've moved so much, I think I just asked Tom, I think for the twenty six budget, we can move that completely. But for this year, no, we will suffice and we'll get it out of there.
Thank you. So superintendent's office is one of the first areas where you see, um, some of our revolving account money and how it's applied. So the Metco administration contracted services, dues, supplies to belong to the program as well as the salaries of the directors. Uh, all of this is part of Metco. So again, for no other reason than transparency, I wanted to show where some of these funds are applied in the budget. You'll see later on, Metco has also applied to transportation. But, um, again, it's there just to show it. But basically this is the same cost center under the superintendent's line. And the only big change is the copier lease. We are near one of three of our copier and that did go up. And that's district wide, not just central office copiers. Um, but district wide, that lease price went up a little bit. So so I added, I added that. Otherwise, um, it's, it's pretty much the same other than contractual salaries and contractual obligations. For curriculum, um, similarly, we have a pretty significant investment in curriculum. Mr. Burke had mentioned the math curriculum investment. You know, that's eighty thousand dollars all in as an, as an more than the year before. That includes leadership salaries, but also the point three increase for the OOD coordinator is also incorporated here. You'll notice, um, there is a negative in the curriculum supply line. That's another personal preference and move to other curriculum lines. Overall, the curriculum budget is up fifty thousand dollars expense wise, if you, if you take the salaries out. And that is primarily due to support the new math. So not only do we have over four hundred thousand dollars, you'll see later in the text lines for the math curriculum, but we also have it supported in the curriculum lines as well to provide for all the curriculum and professional development that the teachers are going to need to implement it. So we have both. We have the materials themselves, but also a commitment to the funding for the professional development. And again, just to show where some of the, the grants that we receive are embedded into the budget.
Tom, I wasn't going to ask, but I saw it in this slide and the previous slide, so I feel like I need to ask.
Sure.
So when I see contract services and there's no comma, copier contract, what should I assume? Is that like?
That could be tutoring for, in this case, it could be tutoring for Metco students. It could be something like that.
Usually people or is it usually like a license for something? That's what I'm just trying to figure out.
It could be both.
It could be either.
So in, in this particular case for, for Metco, just to give it as an example.
Yeah.
It could be tutoring for the students. It could also be a laybus or a contracted service or something like.
Okay. So in the central office where it was like two ninety five, what would that have been?
So those are other contracted services that we have. So the consultants that Mr. Burke might hire.
Okay.
Hang on one second. I should have put the notes in there. I have.
So that's staying the two ninety five. So we have contractors or consultants staying on staff. Is that right?
Yes, I kept, I kept all of those in there, but that also includes things that we need to run the school, like the XP system, student information.
That's what I thought. That's why I was trying to figure, that's what I was wondering. Okay.
Not in that line, yes.
That's what I thought you would say. And I remember seeing a note on Saturday that some of it was licensed licensing for software. Okay.
We probably should transfer these notes. So from that presentation for this one as well.
It's just, it's just a category that like it says central admin comma, comma, copier like that. I get that, but the other one just, I just didn't know. I just like notes, Tom.
Thank you. I'm, I'm thrilled to add them.
I like your notes.
I'll try to merge the two presentations. I, I was looking at last year's versions of these presentations and so I was trying to mimic those. Eventually I'll make it my own and maybe kind of morph them together, but.
You have people in their own vices. So where, where's that money? No, here's where it goes.
Well, what we make up is way different than the truth usually.
I'm happy to provide. Um, so we talked about curriculum. I'm certainly welcome to answer any questions about, about the curriculum lines. Um, but you can see there, the big commitment there from twenty four to twenty five is the seventy thousand dollars in PD for math curriculum revisions. And I think that, that is that commitment, which I think is very important to making sure that that happens. Um, so I kind of put together, um, central office, DEI, HR, business office and technology. And these are mostly salaries, um, in the And these are mostly salaries in the case of other district wide administration. That's not only the DEI director, but it's also contracted services for the DEI program. And so those are together in that. Business and finance salaries are everybody that supports the business office. Human resources is not only our human resource director, but also pieces of secretary salaries. It's all kind of morphed in there together. Legal services has stayed the same. And IT salaries, as I mentioned earlier, that is the IT director and the professional development. I've moved some of the teacher salaries that were working with IT into a different line as well. So that's a little bit of movement there, which I'll show you later on. IT contracted services, as we talked about, the major commitment there is to making sure that we have everything that we need to run the system back of the house. So it's all of the switches and routers and hubs and making sure the internet works, even though we're having trouble this evening. It's hard for me to say how awesome it is, but I'll, we'll keep moving forward. But all of those additional funds are, are important for those and those were articulated in Saturday's presentation too. And that was a big paragraph of notes in that as well. And both presentations will be online this week, so we'll have all that information. So again, I did put curriculum and building leadership together. We had curriculum in one area. And again, I was trying to figure out exactly how to morph this into a little bit more comprehensive presentation. But our department heads are there. I had mentioned to the committee on Saturday that we've made a twelve thousand dollar commitment to providing scholarships for students and families in need. So if there's a field trip and a student really can't afford it and a family can't afford it, that's two thousand dollars in each of the six buildings, rolled up to twelve thousand dollars to provide scholarships for families in need. The other big change here is also additional funding for building administration to replace equipment. We're working hard to provide for a new building for Cushing and Hathley. But as Mr. Burke had mentioned earlier, we need to keep up the high school, Wampatuck, Jenkins and even Gates has been open five or six years now and there are things that we need to do to maintain it. And so I've embedded funds in each of the school lines, twenty five thousand dollars in each of the elementaries, Jenkins and Wampatuck. And I think it was roughly twenty five and fifteen at the middle school, so that those principals can make sure that those buildings stay current and stay robust. And all of that is in the Saturday's presentation was delineated building by building. Here I rolled it up into one number just so we could look at it. But this will allow for them to make sure that those buildings stay current and we don't fall into some of the trouble that we've had in some of the other. Yes. Yes, it is.
Very good point, yes.
Yeah, I, I think this slide, even though there's, there's only a few light items on it, is such a good example of how the school and the team is using the money in really smart ways. And I, I think, you know, Maria and Nicole, I feel like you both asked often about field trips and the worry over the, the money. And so I'm so grateful for the team to have put that money aside for parents and caregivers who, who need support for everybody to go to field trips. So such a good example.
It was a great example, good feedback that we listened to. Now we don't have to stress about that. We're bored with this. Off the table. It's for everybody. Yes, money can be moved around.
Absolutely.
They'll probably need more than we do.
Yeah, we had talked about that on Saturday. Tom said he could move it around.
This is our first time and as Tom has done with other things, after two or three years, we develop the trend. And maybe the high school is eighty percent of it, then we'll move eighty percent there and ten percent.
And then looking at where most of our money goes to instruction as it should be. So you can look here at the teacher salaries, special education salaries, as well as our teacher specialist, medical therapeutic services. That's not our nurses, but that's OTPT. That's that line where I put all of the BCBA's together. And then just to show that our non-resident tuition receipts, our early childhood receipts, the title one at Gates, all of those go to support our teachers and support our students. So again, I wanted to be explicit about how we move those that funding into the budget. We use that four million dollars in grants and revolving and I wanted the committee to be able to see that. Similarly, as we continue with instruction, you'll see the paraprofessional line went down a little bit only in terms of, of salaries because some of it is supported by the early childhood grant, the non-resident tuition receipts and the early childhood receipts. And so I was able to make a couple of adjustments there. But the paraprofessionals are always based on student needs and we have what we need to cover our students. And the librarians happen to be in their own spot in the budget there. So again, I'm trying to mimic this in the same thing you saw on Monday so that we'll start seeing the same cost centers. Over time, it'll start to make more sense as we go kind of one, one cost center to the next and you'll see changes from one to the next. The textbook line, the big story here is what we talked about earlier is we have embedded in our budget money for curriculum improvement every year. And so in FY twenty four, we had three hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars in science to improve our science curriculum. Next year in mathematics, we have four hundred and twenty nine thousand, uh, four hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars embedded into the budget. What that allows for is us to be on a continuous curriculum improvement every year. So each year a subject knows that it's their year to go and we have roughly half a million dollars embedded that we can move from one subject to the next. That's extraordinary, just between you and me and the world. It's, it's awesome because what it does is it allows us to predict that curriculum improvement. And it allows the department heads to relax a little bit because they know this is my year, this is not my year and they can plan for that. And they can plan for that not only in the professional development they offer, but in the materials and supplies that they buy for our staff. So it's a, it's a wonderful opportunity and I was excited to see it there and it made it seamless in terms of supporting the math curriculum improvement next year. Math is one of the more expensive curriculum to improve anywhere. So to have those funds available is fantastic. The other piece of this is you'll notice that the numbers go up and down. The department heads did an extraordinary job really analyzing each one of their lines in the buildings. And these are rolled up here, but if you look at the individual building lines, some are up, some are down. They really took a look at it and said, look, what do I need for next year? Can I get away with a little bit less? Have I already done what I need to do? And that again allows for a district wide approach. And I appreciated that level of specificity and that level of granularity from the department heads and the principals. It really helped us plan ahead and put the initiatives where they need to be in any given year. It wasn't automatic just because you got money this year, you get the same amount next year. It really, they took the time to really dig in and I appreciated that.
Tom, is this line literally textbooks?
Yes.
There's some lines that say supplies and some lines that say textbooks.
In a moment, we're going to jump to textbooks, uh, to supplies. This is textbooks and related software. So these days, anytime you buy textbooks, you get six year license for related software so that the kids can put it on their Chromebooks. It includes that as well.
Got it. Okay.
All the time we've had it to superhand at Burke at here and coming into situ it and the work that's been done in curriculum is astounding over the past five years. It's like moving mountains. It's such a big team and of course, you know, department heads and teachers and professional development, just the entire process. It, it feels, the way you just explained it feels really, it's sitting well because it, it in the past, and it was tough to unravel coming into church and here to test for this, like you don't know what you don't know. And there was a lot of question marks and I don't know. I, I don't know. We couldn't quite put the pieces together, but now it seems, and maybe this final piece is the process of going through department. It's not going to fall off again, like all this great work. As time goes on, there's a process and you go back and you'll eventually circle back and look back at, you know, at science again, when the time is correct and after all the other departments have had their, you know. So that to me is, that's like a big huge shift for us and Mark, planning for the future and everything else.
And thank you, but you know, obviously it's all of this, but I think it's taken this. I think changing any district business or anything, in my opinion, culturally and then systemically and process wise takes three to five years. We're in year four now, so really cool to start seeing these things come to fruition and all the hard work that folks have been putting in. And you start seeing these things and, and you get predictability out of that, right? Like Tom, you mentioned that too. We've got a lot of smart people doing this. So I think it just, when you have, when you take all that stress on the table, like, oh, I might get ten thousand next year for textbooks, but we looked at our textbooks and I think Miss Driscoll gave the example last year. She was in an English class and she opened it up and it had the last signature was from ninety two or something. So, you know, that, we didn't have a literacy program. And a lot of that is because of, of, it could be because of poor planning. And all we've been done here is put in, in these, there's no difference here than planning for fixing our faucets as there are for planning for textbook supplies and what the teachers need. So I think we certainly can do even better, but I think it's also, I want to thank committee and, and our staff for giving feedback because we wouldn't know unless we hear what do you need to succeed? And I know Svenn McAs this question a lot. The teachers have what they need. So we're constantly asking that. And although some of it is a result of just supplies to run their classroom and that's the bare minimum. But I gave some examples earlier that a lot of this genius and planning came from the teachers sitting with department chairs and principals and coming up with a plan. And then Miss Driscoll overseeing it and putting it to work. And then that's why money ties so importantly with what we do. All connected. So thank you. We'll continue to work.
It's not unique to teachers though. My sister opened up, she's teaching fourth grade, opened up a textbook, just thought Rose gave it.
There are some collectibles, there are some collectibles out there.
Tom, is it, um, is it possible in the notes here, you know, I'll echo what you've got, the notes are really helpful. Is it possible to put in the notes for these, for these departments, the last curriculum review we've done or the last time we funded a curric- curriculum update? Is that, I think that would be a little bit.
Sure. I can do some research.
As the committee pages.
Yeah, especially for the most recent ones, because I think people would ask, why is English going down? How not, we're not supporting English. No, they were last year, so that would make sense. But yeah, and as we move forward, we can add that.
And, and well, I have.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. Thank you. Good seeing you. Thank you.
Well, in math, we're in the process of identifying the correct curriculum materials, correct? Is that where we are right now?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Burke. I think we're doing some pilot work.
But we're purchasing now. We've done, we know what we're getting.
Okay, we know, okay, so we know what we're getting. Okay, so this number is, is the number.
Yeah.
Okay, pretty accurate. Okay, alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
The way I apportioned it among the middle school and the high school is simply by enrollment. So the number I was given was the four seventy eight, five forty three. That's, you know, based on enrollment. I just took so much at the middle school, so much at the high school, but it can go back and forth. That's the total we need to purchase the, the stuff and then another seventy for the curriculum professional development. Similarly, with supplies, again, a modest improvement here. I, I kept supplies pretty flat simply because the money this year was going toward the math curriculum and making sure that we can have that improvement. But again, the principals and the department heads were fantastic about being very careful about what they needed for supplies. You'll see industrial tech was in a big improvement to support project lead the way. I tried to put notes where there were big changes, but I certainly will commit to being more comprehensive with the notes and, and I can put notes down much more comprehensively. Also in music, Mr. Thomas mentioned it on Saturday when he came up, but one of the big things that we heard from the teachers was we need money available to replace broken instruments or repair instruments. Many of the students buy them, but for the bigger ones, on the big brass instruments, we loan those to the students and they don't last forever and they need a lot of repair. So we put some money in there to repair and replace broken, worn out instruments. And, you know, and as much as, you know, twenty four thousand dollars is great, that, you know, these instruments cost three or four thousand dollars each. So, you know, we'll really be looking at multiple years of supporting the music program that way. That's pretty much it for supplies. There's not a whole lot to support there. There was, in social studies, an elementary curriculum in third and fourth grade that needed some extra money this year, so we'd be able to put the money into that as well. And then, you know, sort of the other instructional expenses in the budget. These are memberships in order for our students to compete in, in MMEA and different competitions, both at the middle school and the high school. We have to belong to those professional organizations. And so our eligibility is tied to that. Similarly, it does cost money to go to these festivals and competitions. We do some fundraisers for the students for transportation and different things, but there are registration fees that we cover for these festivals and competitions. Virtual high school contract, that's one of these areas where we did take a look at it and we still use virtual high school. But it was budgeted a little bit higher than it needed to be. And so we use it on a per student basis. And adjusting that budget to nine thousand dollars allowed me to put some other money into supplies in different places. So that's one of those areas where we really were, were very careful about making sure we evaluated each one of the lines. For our guidance and adjustment counselors, again, this is pretty, pretty standard. Guidance contract services, the main savings here was going from Naviance to Squire. We're phasing out Naviance at, at the high school level and moving to Squire, which from what I understand is a fantastic program, a lot less expensive and does many of the same things that Naviance does. So again, this was a cost savings going to a new system. Guidance supplies went down a little bit, I think primarily because most of what they do in guidance now is online. College applications are online. Everything's online. It's very rare that we're getting printed materials. And then special education and psychological services, again, going, keeping with the cost centers in the budget. IDEA does help us a little bit with special education evaluation, so I was able to move that down to eight thousand. And then we have money dedicated for purchases of special education services, materials and supplies that we need district wide for special education, testing materials and so forth. All of those are part of that. It did go down a little bit because the IDEA grant does cover some of that. But these stayed pretty, pretty flat, to be perfectly honest. Health services, these are our nurses. We have dedicated nurse in every building, one and a half at the middle school and high school. And these are all of the supplies and services that keep that program going. Transportation, the, the biggest changes here really were the lease of buses. We're in year one of five of our bus lease and the bus lease for this year is three hundred and four thousand. So we had committed two hundred and fifty and we'll take fifty four thousand out of the revenue that we generate from the bus fees in order to cover that difference. So we don't have an impact on on the town or anything like that in order to try to keep things level. But the bus cost of the seventeen buses that we do lease is three hundred and four thousand dollars a year. Otherwise, I kept it pretty, pretty steady. I raised gasoline a little bit just for the rising costs. And again, just to be transparent about how some of the grants support transportation. The IDEA grant supports our special education transportation. Metco supports Metco transportation and the bus receipts support some of our driver salaries as well as the piece of the bus lease. Athletics, as we talked about, overall, this is going to be about a sixty thousand dollar increase. It's thirty two thousand dollars in the operating budget, but it's also supported by another thirty five thousand dollars in sports events receipts that go toward the program. So all in, you'll see the big changes and the biggest change, and I didn't put it here, but I mentioned it on Saturday, is the price of ice. So for girls hockey and boys hockey, the price for fifty minutes of ice time has gone up significantly. And the primary drivers of the increases here are in athletics. We also have made a commitment to unified sports. We're running basketball game at the end of February with Abington. We're hoping to schedule more of those. We have spring track unified sports and we're trying to get off the ground in the fall, a soccer unified sports program to add to everything else that the athletics offers. And we're able to support that as well. So I'm excited about this. And, and the one thing I have to say is it's wonderful to see all the competitions our students are going to, whether it be, you know, national competitions, the cheerleaders were just here last week going down to Florida. Unfortunately, a lot of that does require fundraising. We do budget a little bit of money in the athletic budget to help out any family that really needs help. But, you know, when they get beyond tournaments, we support all the MIAA tournaments. But if a team goes beyond that, that does require a little bit of fundraising. We do the best we can. And that, that's true actually, not only for athletics, but for DECO or any of the other competitions that our students go to. We want them to do the best they can and we'll do the best we can to support them in that. Um, sure.
I think you explained it. I apologize. Going back to the bus license. I think this is just an account, a way that we're accounting for, if you reference it. The budget last year for the bus was three oh four, this year it's two fifty. Difference of fifty four thousand and we, the bus needs to make a difference. But I just want to make sure and I'm sure that it does, but shouldn't the budget still be three oh four?
You add, so what I did is the top part is the, what's going to actually be in the operating budget and the bottom part is what's supported by the grants and revolving.
Okay, so, okay.
So I broke it out that way. In the, in the numbers that we had on Saturday, I kept everything together. Now I've broken it out to operating budget and then grants and revolving. So fifty four thousand of the two twenty five we raised will go toward that. Um, bus lease. I think for me, it was important to be transparent about. I think for me, it was important to be transparent about what is supported by student fees, and I want people to understand, we use those student fees, they're not extra, we, we need them to support the budget. And I lost my ability to move back and forth. Luckily, we're almost done. Okay, hold on, bear with me. Tonight's tech night, Mr. Burkhead. All right. My arrows won't work, let's see if I can do this the old-fashioned way. All right, athletics, other student services, we haven't talked about that, okay. So termination and severance is a line I kept pretty flat, I just rounded up. Basically, anytime that we have a teacher leave for any number of reasons, we need funds available in order to support that. And then we really looked, we just settled with the teachers on all of the student activity fees and all of the different parts of that, and what the teachers get paid for stipends for all the student activities, we do K through twelve. And so I had adjusted that in Monday's adjustments, and so we're keeping that flat, I know what that's gonna be for next year as a result of that. It also has funds available, if an additional club or activity is formed, we have funds available for that as well, and that's at the principal's discretion, working with the teachers, so money's embedded in there. I added a thousand dollars to graduation, just because I was a high school principal for six years, and I know how expensive that can be. And I just wanted to make sure we, we had those funds available. Otherwise, this is, this is pretty flat. I added a little bit more money to situations, that book is fantastic, they did raise the price of our online platform and publication, we just need to support that and keep it going, so. This, my slideshow really likes transportation, just won't go beyond, let's see what we can do. Yes. That's important. The last one, I think, is custodial and maintenance and utilities, and again, we talked about the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for building maintenance. As Mr. Burkhead said, in FY twenty-three, we actually spent over three hundred thousand in that line, so we have the availability to spend more from one year to the next. We're trending towards spending that two fifty this year, and certainly will be spending it next year. I think the biggest difference between this line and the one you saw for building equipment earlier is building equipment is more chairs and tables and desks and those kinds of things in a building, whereas this is more of the back of the house. You know, furnaces and pipes and, you know, that kind of stuff, valves, different things that inevitably break, particularly in a cold winter. So these pretty much stayed flat, except for the contractual salary obligations. I added a little bit more to our telephone line simply because our bus drivers have phones with them, and so we just needed to make sure that that was properly budgeted. It just keeps going back to transportation, I don't know why. Is there one more? All right, added district tuitions, all right, I'll just speak to it. It's an awesome slide, and it'll be in the presentation, so I'm budgeting added district tuitions at three point five million dollars total. That's supported by three different lines in the budget, it's supported by our operating budget, it's also supported by one point eight million dollars in circuit breaker, and about half a million dollars in the IDEA grant. So taken together, that gets us to three and a half million. We are seeing our added district tuition numbers of students going down for FY twenty-five. So this year we have mid to mid thirties, next year we're trending toward twenty-nine, and that's a great thing. So we're keeping our students here, we're doing a lot of the integrated services here for our students. So that's, that's, that basically what that slide said. So that's it. The speedy version of fifty-one million dollars.
Well, very well, we're gonna appreciate you playing this together, such a digestible. We see, that been. Any other questions?
The added district tuition, you said the three point five million, can you just help me understand how, where that number is on this particular slide?
Sure. Let me see if I can. So what you do is you add up the seven hundred and six thousand, the one point eight million, and the five hundred and twenty-four thousand, as well as the five hundred thousand in collaborative, so when you add all that up, you get to three point five million. Just loves transportation, I'm getting out of, I can't talk. I don't, no, thank you.
Great, so we have public comment on our agenda next. Danny, hands raised.
I know, I know we've said this a few times, I just wanna say it, we've thanked Superintendent Burkhead, I think we've thanked the Dr. Rab, I just also wanna thank all the folks who are in the room, because this just doesn't happen without everybody who's here, and I'm sure there were lots of other people that aren't here that helped with this, and so please know that the school committee is impressed, grateful, feeling lucky that we have such a great team in Situate, so just wanted to publicly thank all of our staff for showing up on Saturday and tonight, and also doing all of the work that you do to do this budget and everything else, so thank you very much. Let's just, let's just wrap it up. They wanna go home, are you kidding?
Come on up.
No, Greg, Greg Rennie's giving us the thumbs up, so let's just wrap it up. No, let's just. Yeah, let's just wrap it up. Yeah, just wrap it up.
Like the faculty meeting that gets over two thirty, two twenty-nine, you ask us any questions.
No.
Along to the table.
Yeah.
All right.
Second. Hi.